Yeah, so I thought I haven't written it because you remember last evening. So I was really just writing on John. Oh, right now. Perfect. Yeah, we only have the one action item, otherwise rest. Perfect.
Can you guys hear us?
I can.
Okay, folks online, can folks in the room hear us? Maybe not. Jim, just checking again, can you hear us at all? No, we can't hear you, Jim. Jim, can you hear us? Okay, can you try speaking into the microphone because I don't think we can hear you? We can't hear you.
No.
Okay.
It looks like he's on mute, though, so.
But it shouldn't be going through.
Oh, got it, got it, okay.
Can you hear anything online, guys?
Yes.
A couple of people can.
Wait, you guys could, Elizabeth, you could hear him?
I can hear him now, yep. Nope, not anymore.
Sorry, guys, that was my computer's microphone. We're having some trouble in the room with the new system. They're working on it right now so that we can broadcast this. We appreciate your patience.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, I can, I can hear everybody now.
Can hear you.
Excellent. It's a good day. We got tech working. And they can hear us in the room still?
I don't know.
Okay, is it just me or can I not hear Jim?
I can't hear anybody. I don't know if they're talking.
My screen appears frozen.
Well, there, right now, when you're hearing us, it's coming through our laptops, microphones. We're having trouble with the sound in the room, but they're working on it right now to try and get it figured out. Just stand by, it might be a few minutes.
Okay, got it.
This is our first planning commission meeting with the new teams set up, so there's a couple of bugs we're working out.
Hmm.
We may end up having to just go all virtual online and skip in. Is that, is that how we could fix it, Brett?
Yes, that's how we could fix it. But does everyone have a computer, Jim?
Everyone here in the room does, and then there's, yes, yes, so we would be fine.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to get started while Jonathan is working on that a little bit. And we're going to use the audio from the computer to at least get the called order and.
All right, call the order at seven oh eight. Um, all right. Chair Williams and Commissioner Cornell will be absent. Vice Chair Reese?
Present.
Commissioner Duggan? Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinzener?
Present.
She said yes.
Okay, Commissioner Dai?
Present.
And Mayor Pro Tim Sterling?
Here.
And Commissioner, uh. Why am I, yeah, wow, sorry, I do that every time I've ever said it in a while, will also be absent.
Okay, that sounds good. I think that we've, while we're working on the other problems here, we'll go ahead and do the approval of the minutes. Was there anything that anybody had, any changes? It was pretty short and to the point, so anything that anybody has to bring up about the minutes?
Do we address a spelling change or does that, is that too insignificant? But the Gillespie House is, is just spelled with an A instead of an E, I believe. Not as.
What was the word again?
For the Gillespie House?
Gillespie House, okay.
It should be with an A instead of an E.
All right, we could get that fixed, no problem, with an A instead of an E. Okay, any other errors or issues? Okay, I would entertain a motion on that.
Commissioner, I move to approve the minutes from the.
August.
This, I second. Call the roll.
Alrighty. Commissioner Pinzener? Let's see, Glasser was not here. Commissioner Duggan, were you here? Uh, Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Dai?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Sterling, you weren't here, correct?
Right.
All right.
Okay, so we have the SE group online and everyone here in the room, while they're working on this, this other presentation part of it, has computers in front of us, so I'd say we go ahead and get started with the comp plan presentation. And I'll let you introduce it however you want to do that, Brett. Okay.
All right, yeah, so I'm pretty much just going to go ahead and turn it over to their team. You guys are pretty familiar with them now, so I will throw it over to Aiden. Okay, we're going to pause briefly, actually, one second.
Jack, can you hear us? Jack?
Can't hear you now. Could hear you before, but not right now.
Okay, we're gonna roll with the laptops for right now.
Perfect. Well, hi, everyone, great to see you. I'm Aiden Nikoff and with my team Gabby Buller, Caleb Schmitz, and Dylan McBride. We're all, we all showed up this evening as we're getting closer to the end and really want to make sure that we're all hearing your great feedback and getting to share the draft plan. Thank you to everyone who reviewed the draft plan and who were present at the draft plan presentation. I believe that was last week, but it could have been two weeks ago. I think it was two weeks ago, that's where we are. So tonight, we are going to have a very abbreviated version of a presentation, just to make sure that this group, it has, you know, we're, we make sure that we're all looking at the same information on the land use and housing objectives and actions, and then we'll cover some of the initial feedback that we've been gathering online. All the feedback was in the packet that we've received, so we all have the same information right now. But I'd love to both cover those points and talk about how that could be and is being addressed, and then talk about any, anything else that comes up on the land use and housing side. And if people have comments on other sections of the plan, please go for it. After we finish up that conversation, Chaney Bostic from Studio Seed will be giving a presentation on the downtown sub area plan. This is a plan that we've been working in tandem with the comprehensive plan over the last 10 months or year, probably, actually, I think, or just about hitting a year on this. And then we'll also have some time for discussion and questions on that. I believe the planning commission has not seen as much of the sub area plan just because of timing, so it might be newer for some of you. And we can definitely go into questions. So I will share my screen, but have Caleb start with the initial discussion on the objectives and actions for land use. Is there anything else that I didn't cover that people really want to make sure we're talking about this evening? Perfect, okay. Right before Caleb starts, I just want to show that this presentation does have all of the key issues and facts that these action items were developed from, so if people want the supporting information, we can certainly spend time on it. But I'm coming in with the assumption that some of this has been reviewed just based on your comments. So, going to Caleb.
Great, awesome, thanks, Aiden. Yeah, let's jump into some land use objectives, so in this chapter, our first objective is direct new growth to appropriate locations and encourage sustainable landfill development. So this objective is going to encompass strategies such as adjusting minimum lot size requirements, looking at the development scale and character in town and starting to really identify where are the most appropriate locations for development to go. So that could be also looking at revising off-street parking requirements, just to make sure that the kinds of development that Netherlands wants to see are happening in the specific locations that Netherlands wants to see it happening. The second objective is promoting the development of more affordable housing with supportive land use regulation. So we know affordable housing is a really big topic and is coming up as a big part of being integrated into the land use chapter. So this is looking at things like simplifying permitting pathways to make sure that affordable housing projects can be built, reducing ADU restrictions, potentially looking at affordable density bonuses, and potentially looking at pre-approved housing designs that would make it easier to get housing built a little bit faster in town. The third objective that we're looking at is preserving the historic mountain town character of downtown Netherlands. We heard loud and clear through our community engagement that the historic downtown is important, as well as the specific feel that Netherlands has, being mountainous and rustic and all of those good descriptor words there. So this is again looking at things like architectural design standards, looking at view preservation, historic preservation, and adaptive reuse of old buildings as opposed to necessarily always building a new building. We can go on to the next slide, Aiden. Our fourth objective in this category is supporting key businesses in appropriate locations for a strong local economy. So this is our objective that ties land use into some of the stuff going on in the economic development sort of chapter. So this could be looking at making sure that the land uses align with the kinds of businesses that Netherlands wants to see, such as potentially promoting in home childcare, making sure that commercial spaces are high quality, that, you know, the kinds of businesses that Netherlands wants to see, like healthcare professionals could move into those commercial spaces, and also starting to look at Wolf Tongue, for example, as somewhere where new commercial uses could happen. The fifth objective in this category is clarifying and simplifying code and land use designations. This is all again about streamlining permitting pathways, potentially taking a look at PUD requirements. Currently, we're aware that a lot of projects go through the PUD process and potentially not all of those have to be going through that process, so it's an opportunity to look at those again, as well as just making sure that development requirements are clear and concise, so that developers feel like they can develop in Netherlands and have a good understanding of what that outcome will be like for them. And then finally, our final objective is to mitigate hazard exposure and risk through land use regulation. This is the land use objective that ties into hazards and natural resources, so looking at continuing to prohibit floodplain development, looking at options for defensible space and home hardening, and providing wildfire mitigation education as that relates to how people use their land privately. So yeah, those are, that's kind of the overview of the land use chapter, and I think now I'm going to pass on to Dylan to talk a little bit about the housing chapter.
Great, thank you. So yes, I'll be talking about the housing. So our first objective was implementing outstanding recommendations from the twenty 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 three Housing Needs Assessment. So I'm sure all of you are very aware of the Housing Needs Assessment, since my understanding is that you all were very involved in the development of the Housing Needs Assessment. There was four overarching objectives and associated actions, and some of those actions are still, you've addressed many of them, some of them could be taken a little further, and some of them are still a little bit outstanding, so we just codified, or we outlined some of the ones that are remaining. So some of those looking like some affordability considerations and defining affordability in your code, and making sure that we can address those, and then density bonuses as well was an outstanding recommendation, expediting development review, which is also something that ties back to the land use component that Caleb just highlighted, and decreasing development review fees. And the second objective was leveraging opportunities from the recent state legislation. So I'm sure many of you are very aware that the state had a very active legislative cycle in twenty twenty three, a lot of housing-related bills, and associated with some of these are requirements, some of them are funding opportunities, and then in some cases, there's also technical assistance available. So for instance, there's opportunities through certain legislation, like Senate Bill one seventy four, and let's see, also, House Bill thirteen oh four Prop one two three that provides for technical assistance by meeting certain requirements. So obviously, in some cases, you all are very well far along and should be able to leverage some of these assistance as you see fit. Objective three, and this is one that we'll continue to workshop a little bit, because I think we got very good feedback at the last public meeting about, so this is about continuing to build upon Boulder County partnership and most specifically with aligning with the Boulder County Housing Partnership and Boulder County Housing Authority. But we're also become more acutely aware of some of the town's ongoing partnerships with the development of the peak-to-peak housing authorities, so leveraging some of those opportunities as well to increase your regional partnership. So we can go back and amend some of this to make sure that we're reflecting current and ongoing planning objectives. Next slide, please. So the fourth objective is looking a little bit more, so in many cases, we talk about housing from the demand side, about how we can make sure that we're building more housing and what can we do to provide more housing, but this is a little bit looking at some of the supply side, so creating and preserving affordable housing. So looking at your zoning regulation updates, so I won't belabor that point too much, I'm sure all of us have heard way more than we ever expected to about zoning. And Caleb did a very good job outlining some of the land use regulations that should be updated, such as streamlining permitting, inclusionary zoning requirements, et cetera. And then helping households access and afford homes, so this is also looking at how for people that are maybe currently living in your community or in adjacent communities and that want to live in your community or working in your community, can be able to afford to have a house in your community. So things like housing and rental assistance, assistance, employer-assisted housing, housing choice vouchers. And so the obvious thing is that a lot of these do require money, and so there's, we tried to outline in the plan where some of these sources are available through the federal government or through county housing authorities and how you all might be able to leverage some of those outside funding sources. Next slide, please. Okay, I think that's it. Aiden, do I take it back to you?
Yeah, I am planning on jumping into some of the feedback that we've heard so far. And I believe this is just from two to three specific planning commission members, so certainly don't want to paint the picture that we've, we've heard it all at this point. I will pause before I jump in, just while any, if anything's fresh in people's mind, if they had questions on some of those actions and strategies and objectives. I'm seeing some nodding from Mike.
Any questions here?
No questions right now.
Perfect. So.
Anybody online, one second, anybody online that has questions? From the planning commission, I'm sorry. Okay, please continue.
Perfect. So this first slide here, we've kind of separated it into overall thematic feedback, and then we have some specific bullet points on the next slide. But these three that you'll see here have a very similar tone and goal of seeing some of the initial draft language as maybe too tactical in nature and less strategic. This is something that we heard maybe the reverse of 10 months ago, when we were talking to your group about what do you want to see from this plan? And we heard action-oriented, we heard specific, we didn't want wishy-washy. And so I think there is a way to strike a balance here, but just throwing it out there that that's where some of the comments are. But wanting to make sure that we are hearing the right level of specificities that in our next draft, we can address that tone. The second bullet point kind of speaks to me why this is seen as an issue, and wanting to make sure that the town doesn't have sort of a checklist that they must do, that they're tied to, and that there can be room for nuance and adaptability over the next five to 10 years as implementation of this plan happens. And the last one specifically is the draft uses words like action and implement designate, where maybe softer terms as evaluate or study and identify might help provide some of that flexibility. From people who didn't specifically give this feedback and are maybe just seeing this now, what other, what other additions after hearing this do you have?
Elizabeth Penzenner here, and I agree that there can definitely be in between something on the wishy-washy and something that maybe locks us into, you know, too tightly. So those two points, I definitely agree with finding some kind of middle ground there. But the third bullet, I did want to ask, just there were a couple of points in the draft plan that I felt like could use further research or clarification. Some of the points about just the income, for example, the $200,000 income required to afford the median house. I don't, I don't know how extensive that study was. It doesn't resonate for me. And I don't know what formula was used or just how much, you know, went into some of these things where I do agree with the third bullet that maybe some additional or multiple sources of kind of some of the statistics provided could, could warrant some additional investigation or some more time to explore. So this really related back to the question of how much density housing do we really need? Are we really seeing an accurate demand for super-high-density affordable living in multiple locations? Or are we using housing statistics that maybe aren't accurately reflecting the public's desire? I think there was also a public letter suggesting that population growth and just kind of expanding the density isn't necessarily reflective of the town's wishes. So to me, those two points relate to maybe warranting some additional softening of the action toward greater investigation and evaluation.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for providing a specific point that you are hoping for us to look into more. That's super helpful. As there are other things, please send those along. The statistic that you're referring to, I believe we pulled from the Housing Needs Assessment. And so that would be where we can look back at what, what they used to pull that from. But I believe they were assuming a $700,000 median home price. And to afford that comfortably, I believe thirty percent of someone's income was used as that calculation.
Yep, this is correct. I'll just pop in here because I was on the chair.
The income, to the mortgage, not to the, right, so the formula of thirty percent comes from thirty percent of your income should be spent on rent or housing. But that would, that would mean thirty percent of their income would be their mortgage, not.
Commissioner Penzenner? Yeah. Have you, have you read the housing study?
No, I was only reading the presentation that was pulled from for the comp plan. Sorry, thanks.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I would, I would highly recommend if anybody on the, on the PC has not read that housing study yet, because it does break down like what Aiden is talking about. And hopefully it'll provide a little bit more clarity. Because yeah, that was an extensive study. It was about a year long. It took in quite a bit of community feedback in terms of like this affordable housing is a high priority. And so I think that while that letter that was written into us was very much, you know, fearful of population growth, I didn't get the same feeling of reading the comprehensive plan or the draft, because it was all crouched within affordable housing. However, it sounds like that maybe we could clarify some of that language a little bit more, just to make sure, you know, that it doesn't fall through the cracks. I would also reiterate and articulate, you know, what Aiden said is that the BOT did give very explicit instructions that this was supposed to be actually more tactical, not so wishy-washy, and that it needed to be as specific as possible. So I just know that that's something that the BOT was very explicit about. And so however, you know, some of the words here that was recommended, such as goals, evaluate, study, identify an objective. Sure, I mean, that seems like a reasonable potential, you know, compromise. But I, I, I will just reiterate, the BOT is definitely looking for something much more prescriptive than what we had received in the two thousand thirteen edition. So just provide some of that context, too.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. And thanks, Elizabeth, for your question. Mike, go for it.
I, I hear you were saying, Nicole, about the letter. Let's see, it was a letter to the editor here by, let's see, Eric. I don't know his last name, David.
Eric Davis.
Davis. It did resonate with me, and as you were saying about not the, the fearfulness of population growth isn't so much reflected in the comp plan as it is intending to incur affordable housing growth. But I do see some of his concerns as extremely relevant, not only population growth, but he mentions a lot of mention of environmental protections, especially compared to this comp plan, protecting our environment, open spaces and environmental stewardship, preservation, natural resources, preparation for climate change. And there is something in the comp plan, but I was honestly hoping to see more. I think that's really critical in terms of what a town currently is, has been in the past, and what I Netherlands will continue to be in the future. I, some of the boundaries, like the three, three mile plan, I think there should be mentioned that some of these areas mentioned are wildlife corridors and wetland. I think it's really important to have that in there, that while they might be identified as possible areas of growth, that it really, you know, that would be in the stance to warrant that, because it has really profound impacts on wildlife and depends on what the town is. On a slightly different note, not referring to the letter that I just mentioned, but regarding affordable housing in general, I've said this before in the planning commission, but I think it's very dangerous to define affordable housing based on one hundred percent AMI. I know that's the HUD definition, but when we're talking about something that's affordable, and in this situation, that means that a rent for a one-bedroom apartment could be as much as two thousand five hundred a month. I, I find that to be absurd, like on the doublespeak level. And I know that's not your intent, but but I think we need to take a different path, even if that didn't align with the common use of affordable as defined by HUD and other government agencies. Any thoughts on that?
I think that's one of the follow-up things that, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that we need to, we need, as Netherlands, we have to define what affordable means. We have not done that yet as a municipal jurisdiction. That would be one of the follow-up things. You're absolutely right. So.
Just as long as we avoid a specific definition of affordable in the comp plan, that, I think that's important to, and I know it was state that that's something that we need to identify and as a community to find what that means.
Yep. Thank you, Mike. I think to your first points about the wildlife and open space and climate change, I think we definitely hear you and we'll make sure that that is showing up, especially in the natural resources chapter, but also scattered through other chapters where there is overlap and coordination. But I would say makes me think of some of the comments that we got that I've cataloged on this next slide, and specifically about clarifying where new development can take place and that it's not just anywhere where there's a vacant parcel, but being specific about the areas that may be within an existing PUD, maybe within a wetland or a steep slope, and being specific there. Jonathan, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I'm thinking if we might want to take a slightly different tack than that, because I agree that we need to have maybe a little bit more talk and understanding contextually around these open spaces that are vacant or whatever we want to call that right now, and that they're not all developable. But I do think we need to be a little bit careful about where we say they are. And I'm just saying from experience in other comp plans, I've seen that happen where people say this is like the site for this particular development to happen. And then we don't have any feasibility studies or anything like that. And so I'm wondering if instead of like trying to say specifically, these areas are where development will occur, we say there, you know, something in that section where we talk about the vacant land part, like say, you know, there's a lot of different kinds of constraints on this land. And I think using that resiliency framework that you guys created, that was to kind of tie sustainability into everything we're doing, but just say, you know, we have environmental concerns on a lot of these parcels. We have identified some that we think are appropriate for development and then maybe, but further study is required to see how they fit and what kind of easements, or you know, like these legal situations that we find on certain parcels that we need to continue that work as one of the goals of the plan. And I'm wondering if that would be a way to kind of achieve this, this goal of this feedback.
Yeah, I like, I like that idea. Aiden, can I chime in on the overall feedback slide? If you go back to that one?
Yeah.
Another idea that might assuage some folks' concerns is we could add some discussion in the introduction in like the how to use this plan section that talks a little bit about the desire for the tactical plan based on the previous plan and that like, like I think there needs to be some softening of like, the expectation is not that every single action gets accomplished in the next 10 years. There's going to be some prioritization and, you know, you're going to pick as a planning commission, maybe the three things from this plan that you want to accomplish as a commission in twenty twenty-five, for example. But then it's like a menu of sorts, and obviously there's some things in that are going to be more important than others, but it's a menu or guidebook for the Board of Trustees and the Planning Commission to pick goals that are important for that particular year or in that next couple of years and to start working on those, rather than feel like it's a call to action of you need to get every single thing in this plan done in the next 10 or 15 years. So I don't know if adding some, a section or a paragraph or two in the introduction that walks through that a little bit would be helpful to the commission or not. But we're happy to do it if you're, if you, if you want to go that direction.
I apologize. I was looking ahead on a couple of slides and I didn't quite understand what you're asking. Could you please repeat that?
I just, I just, I, I, I wanted to say another way to address some of the concerns from, from this slide is to add some language in the introduction that talks a little bit more about how to use this plan and why it's more tactical in nature as opposed to going through and changing a lot of the exact language and all the actions.
Well, you know, I, I kind of feel like, especially after hearing trustee Sterling talk about, you know, the guidance from the BOT that maybe the PC and the BOT need to kind of come together and, and make sure that we're asking for the same thing from the SE group. So we have right now three, two members of our planning commission that have been through the last two planning commissions. So they've been involved with the town for more than 20 years. So this doesn't necessarily look like what they've done in the past, and I think that's why we're getting some of the feedback we're having. But the main thing that I would say is that we need a little more time. The timeframe seems pretty compressed for us to kind of get on the same page. Right now, I'm not sure exactly if that's what's going to end up happening, but we're recommending that it be pushed out until after the first of the year so that we could have a joint board meeting with the BOT. We're kind of working that right now with trustee Sterling. But we haven't identified a date yet, or, or if we're going to be able to do that. But certainly, you know, I, as being the first person, first time I've seen one of these, I like having a little specific, specific, yeah, specific items for us to, to accomplish and that aren't as broad so that, you know, we can actually look and say, okay, we, we checked off, you know, these, and these are the ones that we still need to work on. But I, I think, I just think that we, we got to kind of get on the same page in that because we didn't get it in August like we'd hoped, we, we were going to plan on spending basically the entire August or September meeting kind of digging into this. And unfortunately, three of the main and very involved people of the planning commission are traveling and are not here. That's, that's Chair Williams and Tom Holden and Roger Cornell. And you've gotten feedback from two of them. So as far as I'm concerned, we just drive through with what we have here and they can submit some information. But I, I do believe you're going to be getting a request for this to kind of be extended out and not be adopted in, in December like we had hoped. But of course, you know, we're not the approving authority, so.
Well, and I think just to cap, hop on that, and which I think the BOT would be just fine if this was, you know, pushed out a little bit because, you know, rather do it right than do it quick. And we can, we can use that time to, to, to come around with another draft or two, you know, before adoption. I don't think necessarily that we're far off gem in terms of, you know, the specificity. And if it's just, if it's a matter of word choice, right, then I feel like that's easily rectifiable and maybe doesn't require a joint meeting. But I also think, even though it's been 20 years of watching this process, I think that the, the way comprehensive plans are being created has changed a bit. And so there is, there are new, there are sort of new protocols, new ways of doing it. And it's sort of more in line with this and providing more specificity. But John, I, I know that you've had some experience with this, and I'm wondering if you could just pop in here and relate some of the experience with some of these new ways of writing comp plans.
Yeah, we're seeing, I mean, there's big changes in this industry. And I think, you know, I don't know if I see a group you want to talk about a little bit, but there's new state requirements for what comp plans for towns need to include. And I'm not even sure, like, I guess that's one of my questions I had for you is how you feel like we're doing, like on these new elements, like on water and things like that. Like if we need to be thinking about that more than we have. But I think in a lot of ways, what happens is, is we've got this kind of formulaic thing that we've got to create, and that's what we have now. We have a really good draft. And I think it's our duty to really kind of turn this into like the Netherlands document. And I think that's really what this conversation is about, is making it fit Netherlands. And it's not that it's, you know, that these are just pushed on people, but it's just, you take all this data and then you have to tell this story. And that's what the comp plan does. It's not a code. It's a story about Netherlands and our goals, hopes and dreams and what we're going to be when we grow up. And I think that what we need to do as staff, and what I would appreciate from tonight from planning commission is the opportunity for staff to work with SE group to kind of get to this version 2.0 here that we could talk about again. And I think we could do that pretty quick. I think there's some like Mayor Protem Sterling said, there is some opportunities here to just insert some language that's more context sensitive to our community and to like look at some of these things that, you know, 10,000 feet look a little different than five inches, you know. So I'd like the opportunity to work with that with SE group and Brit and kind of bring this around just a tiny bit and work on some of our things. We can bring this back relatively quickly. If SE group is comfortable bringing this back in January, I think we could be more than ready by then. And I think Mayor Protem Sterling, as you said, I don't think this is like super far off. I think, you know, it's a matter of having some conversations about what's happening here, making sure these elements align with our vision and goals, and then finding that consensus, because ultimately what we want is a plan that everybody understands, at least at the planning commission and board level, so that when the board builds a strategic plan and they're kind of saying, these are the things we're working on, that's in tandem with what the planning commission is expecting. And we can make sure that those, those relationships and that work happens efficiently over time. So our strategic plan can be, can complete. You know, I've heard some concerns, you know, the housing element especially, there's some really basic math that we can do there to make sure that that fits. And, you know, we're never going to build super crazy density here. And I know that that's a concern about this plan, that we're going to prioritize giant buildings all over Netherlands and become slot home city. And it's not going to happen. Like, there's just no way that happens in Netherlands. And I think we can put language about that in here and say, you know, we want Netherlands to be, I think what I hear people say a lot is Netherlands needs to stay Netherlands. We need to stay a community of people. We need to make sure our density- We need to make sure our density doesn't look too big. We need to make sure that we preserve all this wildlife and that maybe someday we get an indoor swimming pool. Like, these are the things that I heard from this cop plan. And I think that if we just play with that language and put this in the language that everybody here uses, I think this thing starts looking like a really great document. And so if we could get some direction from you all tonight to do that work, I think we could come back with this version two draft that'd be really impressive for you at your next meeting and and how we do the work session. I think that's a great idea, like getting that to happen. And you know, we're in the budget season with BOT right now and it's tight and there's a lot of things happening. But if we could sneak it in before Christmas, great. If we can't, if we could just do it early in January and then be in kind of an approval process for February, we wouldn't be off too far. And I think that's just a question I'd have for SE group and planning commission if that would be okay with y'all.
Certainly, we'll get to you in just a second, Commissioner Penzinger. Certainly, yes, the the expanding it out, I think that was, you know, for those of you don't know, Chair Williams and I met with John on Friday, John and Brit and and kind of discussed, you know, the concerns that basically is feeling a little rushed. And I think the main thing is is that the members want to feel like that they have a chance to get their input in there. And, you know, their input doesn't mean that that's going to change the entire document. You know, everybody, but you know, people want to have their say. So I certainly know that myself and and the planning commission definitely would like to see this extended out. And if if we're able to have a joint meeting with the board, I think that would be great just to be sure that we're on the same page. But, you know, I understand they've got a lot of other priorities too. So, you know, we'll make it happen one way or another. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
I just echo all of that. I I think just some additional language and just to echo what Gabby initially said that could be really beneficial. You asked for feedback of what could help. And I think some language suggesting this kind of toolkit concept is really where the compromise is. So it's sort of saying, yes, we want to be action oriented and we want to be decisive, but that doesn't mean lockdown. And I think presenting it as a toolkit is that kind of that's the way to go because it really gives us as many options as possible without the sense of this this locked in feeling. Thanks.
Gabby, I had one more comment. I just wanted to add, and we can talk about this offline too and figure it out. But you know, I know from an economic, like financial perspective, like this is maybe slightly a take from what a common plan might include. But we have some really strong financial considerations for this town and our financial situation right now that we really need to be thinking about. And I know we've talked about that a little bit in terms of implementation of action goals. And that's something that I'd also like to just talk to you guys about about looking about just thinking about our priority goals, low hanging fruit things in terms of the what we're actually able to accomplish from a capital project standpoint would be helpful to I think just a little bit.
Yeah, just to respond to that, I mean, it is funny, like, we're finishing a couple of these projects like right around budgeting season and then the realities of like, I think a lot of people had these fat budgets the last couple of years, and then they're starting to tank a little bit and seeing this huge list of ideas is pretty scary. At the same time, doing a fiscally constrained comp plan, which basically means only things in there that you can fund is no fun and there's no visionary vision or aspiration there. And so I think in the implementation having, you know, yes, you know, toolkit menu, however you want to couch it, like we can have some language there. But I think it would be good maybe in the work session, if you're going to do a work session with planning commission BOT is to really talk about what the top priorities, maybe in the one to three year timeframe would be from the plan so that you can at least pull some of those items out and have them top of mind in the next couple of years. And then another idea is like, maybe you have a 2025 budget letter that's like an appendix that says, hey, this is our new comp plan. It talks to our community's values. However, in 2025, our budget realities are XYZ. And we're going to really focus on these accomplishable things. And like, maybe you do like a short letter each year or something like that, that kind of talks about the fiscal realities of like what from the comp plan is doable. Like, that's a way to kind of tie all these different things together potentially.
Yeah, I don't want to go too constrained for sure. I also was wondering, Gabby, if you could talk a little bit about the new requirements for comp plans and what may happen in the future. Because we're probably looking at a five year window before this needs to be updated at max, right? Just to kind of meet those. So we're not talking in 10, 15 year plan here. This is this and there could be those elements, but we do need to be thinking about these short kind of horizon things.
So the state requirements at the best basic level have not changed. Like, you don't need to do much other than have like a recreation section. However, the strings attached to different funding streams have changed. So if you're going to get DOLA money, Department of Local Affairs money for a comp plan, you now need to have a water, water and water planning section. So that's more of a funding requirement. And then all of the housing legislation that Dylan mentioned is there's all these different strings attached to qualify for different affordable housing programs. And so like the proposition 123 of like building your fair share of housing by, I can't remember what, by the end of next year, gets keeps you in the game to continue to get money from the state for more affordable housing. So I feel like it's not that the state requirements have changed, but there's all these other laws and funding streams that are relevant enough to comp plans that they end up directing some of the goals and policies of a comp plan. It's like, do you want to miss out on opportunities for free money for affordable housing? Like, probably not. So we want to at least address what you need to do to keep yourself eligible for all those state funding streams. So I think that's what's driving a lot of the housing policies and recommendations. And then like the water and land use thing I mentioned. But I have noticed a trend towards more tactical comp plans. I think everyone had these somewhat high level plans from five to 10 years ago. And then COVID happened and there's been tons of change, whether that's housing prices, influx of new residents, you know, business employment pressures. And so the community is like, we need something a little stickier for us to give us guidance on what to do reacting to all of these things. And they looked at their comp plans from the mid odds, and they just weren't cutting it in terms of giving them the guidance they needed. And so that's my own philosophizing on like, why I think comp plans have swung back towards being a little more action oriented. We can go back to the scheduled programming now. I'm off my soapbox.
Yeah. So, you know, and to to address Jim where there you feel like there might be disconnect between the BOT and the PC. You know, I would just maybe that's if we can't fit in the joint session because we are, we are booked multiple times in the next few months for the budget. So if we can't get a meeting before Thursday or before January or the end of December, I mean, a cup, you know, we can do small scale and, you know, chairs meet with Mike, Billy and I just to make sure. But I mean, for them, I I really do truly think that it's it comes down to semantics and I I would leave it up to staff and John to give us a 2.0 to see if it actually we find that we're much more aligned than we think.
Okay, and I agree with that. And I believe, again, it comes down to, you know, some old timers that have been around, you know, and seen the previous evolution, you know, the previous iterations of this. And now, you know, it's evolved into a different type of document. Mainly, they want to get their say so in there, you know, John heard it on Friday from Steve and and, you know, I'm I'm pretty new to comp plans. I see where, you know, and people that ask about the specific details. Well, you know, clearly, you know, if you were involved in the transportation plan and you were involved in the housing plan, you could see where this is all coming together into a master document based on data that that from previous plans that have been worked on. So, you know, I think it'll it'll work out fine, you know, with a little extra time for these guys to to get their their input in there. And then, you know, the world evolves. And so we'll we'll trust our town manager and and our experienced people to to get a document that's going to work for our town. I do want to address, you know, the, we kind of talked about, I didn't want to jump in. I don't want to make this meeting too long. But the population, you know, the letter that I read kind of made it sound like we're trying to bring 5,000 new people to town. And that is not at all what's going on. The housing state, again, people are seeing this without the benefit of seeing the prior work that was done in the housing study groups that we did. And what was determined was we're 120 housing short units short for the people that should actively live or actively work or in this community that would want a place to live. And so that is where a lot of these things are coming from. It's not that we're looking to put up condos and apartment buildings all over town. We're trying to meet the need that is going unmet right now. And so I, you know, understand totally where that information come from. And as this gets more digested by the town and people care to look into it a little more, they'll get to hear that stuff right now. But, you know, we're in the draft portion. And people shouldn't be getting their hair on fire over something that is not finalized. So please continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, for referencing that number. I think it is 120 units and it might be over the next 10 years. Something that was mentioned when we were pulling in that data is that that does not consider potential housing needs for Eldora employees and then also the mine reopening. And I haven't, we haven't really followed up that conversation from five to six months ago. But just know that there is, you know, 120 is to address existing need and slows or latent growth. But that there are still some other key employers who might still have housing need unmet. That doesn't get us close to 5,000, however.
Well, and to be specific, 120, 115, 120 ish was the minimum. They gave a range in the housing study. So that 15 and 120 was at the very minimum.
Okay, thanks, Nicole.
A little bit to Aiden as well. So I just, that came from a different organization where we did a housing needs assessment. So when I came in, that was the first thing I read and sort of ran again, ran the numbers against our own sort of my own masters to make sure because I was a little surprised. But I think another thing to kind of take into consideration is that all of the like forecasts for the housing need are estimates. So they're basically basing on, you know, previous growth rates and then forecasting that out based on, you know, growth trends and different like regional sectors. And it's using census data. So there's a pretty high confidence interval on those numbers, but they're also, again, as Aiden was saying, they're targets. And then also just to kind of help also right size sort of the image around housing too. So in 2023, the town of Netherlands committed to Prop 123, which means that they're basically going to be over the next 12 years, you commit to 3% new affordable housing over that 12 year time period. And so what that ends up looking like is 12 units over three years.
13. We're committed to 13.
13 units.
They rounded up.
We rounded up. We committed to 13 and it's by 2026 that they need to be permitted for. Yeah, 100. However, I think that some of this context is helpful. You know, the minimum 120 up to yes, Prop 123, I'm almost imagining a bit of an infographic at the beginning of just some of these really big points. Like these really like rounded like truths that we have in realities. Because some folks may not always may not know that we also have 100 plus houses or units, I guess it could be called that are actually not, it's it's like a second homeowner type of, they're not, they're not actually provided housing. I'm losing context for what I want. 100 houses that are just lying vacant, so to speak, vacant, no homeowner in it. And that is also help crushing the reality that we have of having available housing for people, right? And so it's all these things sort of bumping up to us is the reality that we have and what we have to what we have to navigate.
Yep. And Nicole, I think let's let's move to Chaney's item, but I just want to also add that that really ties in to the sales tax and property tax side of things of, you know, people are vacant, they're not living here, they're not spending money in town. And there's need for more additional both property and sales tax. So we do have this next slide. I think we touched on a lot of it. And just in the interest of time, I'm going to skip it for the time being, but just know that we are considering these. We've heard it, we've read it, and we'll make sure to address them and work with John and whatever feedback we hear from PC and BOT.
One, one big thing on that with the three mile plan, just because they're a very sort of big source of a fear in the town that there's a land grab that people that the town somehow is going to reach out and and see these maps and say, oh, these are all areas that the town wants to take. If you could somehow state in there you know, some of the requirements for annexation a little more in the final plan, you know, like really big and bold at the beginning, you know, let's say, you know, the town cannot initiate, you know, the requirements of it, the town cannot initiate station process, there has to be a vote. It has to be you and your neighbors that of the land that, you know, those are the the main things that will stop me from getting an earful every Sunday at church.
That is the change in taxation, not ownership. The government does not own these lands. On through annexation.
Right.
That's a good one.
Thank you both. Okey dokey, Chaney, are you ready to go here?
Yes. Can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, I'm getting a weird pop up when I try to turn my camera on, but it's late and my lighting is bad, so it's probably just better. So anyway, I'm Chaney Bastico Studio Seed as per the SE group team for the comp plan. My focus is was to focus on the downtown and create a downtown sub area plan. So as we talked about the comp plan being kind of this 5,000 foot level, a sub area plan zooms in. So it consider this, you know, a 500 foot level. And so with all the talk about semantics and detail, a sub area plan is intended to go into more detail. That is exactly what it serves to do. And so this will serve as a blueprint for the next 10 to 15 years. The town initiated this when the RFP was issued for a comp plan. The downtown was of concern due to some impending development proposals and also some major infrastructure investments. And so wanting to look at the downtown holistically. It will serve as a supplement to the comp plan. So it will talk to the comp plan and is, you know, a part of it. It can't go against any of the things that the comp plan says, but it can go into a little more detail. And lastly, just to point out that the we are working closely with the DDA because the you the town does have a downtown development authority and these things are often, so the DDAs have a plan of development, which is what we looked at. They last updated theirs in 2017. And that's kind of where we started from. So a lot of those ideas from the DDA plan are are included and revised and updated and elaborated on. But this is trying to align town priorities and DDA priorities as the two main entities that will take on public improvements. Next slide. So a vision statement, these are often included. This was made up from just a lot of the feedback and comments that we dug through from online survey and workshops. So downtown Netherlands is a place for locals and visitors to gather, shop, dine and play together. Visitors remember Netherlands as a distinctive place that is has a unique sense of community and laid back small town vibe. The architecture is a mix of old and new that reflect the historic character and create an authentic place. Downtown is easy to access and inviting for people of all ages and abilities. Locally owned businesses thrive and make downtown Ned a unique destination while also serving the daily needs of residents. People feel one with nature, enjoying trails along the creek and lake and taking in majestic mountain views. Its historic roots as a mining town, ski town and music town are reflected through its architecture, public spaces, art and festivals. It's kind of long, but we wanted to get in all of the things that we heard that make downtown Ned special. So in the downtown sub area plan, we've organized the this chapter section document into pressing topics. Again, this was these were organized based off of the feedback we heard. So there's economic development, housing. off of the feedback we heard. So there's economic development, housing, growth and character, circulation, gateways and parking, and then recreation tourism and place making. Next slide. We also, uh, at the forefront, identify these catalytic projects. So these are, um, as as the title and, you know, says catalytic, these are things that can be done to, um, that can be catalytic for making improvements for downtown. Number one is a first street overlay district. So this is taking within, so first street development potential was a, a concern that we talked through with the community. We had a couple of workshops on, we looked at different models and um, and with this specifically in mind. And so there's recommendations in the plan for an overlay district that would be over the CBD district. And that would be if any development proposal were to occur along first street in that blue box area, the overlay district would supersede CBD. And the superseding factors that we worked with the community on are essentially updating some of the dimensional standards, like increasing setbacks to have a wider sidewalk, um, making sure that the, if a third floor is included in new development, that it be stepped back so that the scale from the street really, um, reads as that one to two story environment. Um, and then adding additional guidelines. We're working with staff now that it was, um, if you've read through the draft plan, it's, it's pretty detailed. I don't think it will take a lot to get to get to a, um, an actual overlay district. So, but that is the next step. First Street Festival Street, this was another big idea. So first street was talked about a lot. We also, um, workshop this with the community. And we have a recommendation for kind of a preferred section, um, of first street and also the functioning of that to be a, a festival street where say in the summer months or weekends or holidays, you could, you could shut down the street and have festivals, tents, farmers markets. But throughout the other, you know, kind of snowier months, um, colder months, it would function as it does today. So we can get into that gateway intersections, um, really just introducing people to Netherlands, having some roundabouts and, and landscaping and signage to welcome people and, and let them know that, uh, they're coming into a special place. Uh, Snyder Street Bridge, number four, the, the other bridge across the creek. It was considered, there was some engineering that looked at that. And so this is the kind of, we're identifying the preferred, uh, location for that. Uh, number five is a waterfront park and amphitheater. The DDA is currently working, um, continuing to work on an amphitheater in this location, but we also, um, amplify that topic of really trying to string together the creek side into Barker Reservoir and creating this long open space park, uh, for downtown. And then number six, um, which you'll see splattered across the map are really opportunity sites for private investment and redevelopment. This is, this is not saying that it has to occur. Of course, it's private property. It's up to those, um, property owners, but they are either have been identified. Some of them are like activating vacant properties like the bank, um, building there and, um, Black Forest Restaurant, but they're on there as opportunities. So that is catalytic projects, which is a lot of the plan that we talk about. Next slide. Um, just quickly, we've, uh, identified some character areas in the plan. We identify, um, we have verbiage around like the future vision of each of these areas. They do have a little bit different character, so we just want to acknowledge that in the plan. And so there's seven of those. Next slide. So into recommendations, again, this is a summarized version. Um, the plan goes into more detail. And if you've read the draft, you know that. But just at a high level, um, so the recommendations, um, are related to those pressing topics. So under economic development, housing, we talk about, um, working to stabilize existing businesses. We heard loud and clear that local businesses is very important. We also have heard mo- uh, very recently that a lot of local businesses are at risk or considering, um, closing. So we want to, uh, you know, have a plan that really addresses that issue. Also recruiting new businesses, because we also heard that people want, um, you know, a pharmacy and a clinic and, and some of those daily needs that aren't there. So having the ability to to have that in the coming years is important. And then finally, under housing incentivizing affordable and workforce housing and new development, there's nothing in your current code that says the downtown CBD has to include affordable housing, but there is the housing needs assessment and the comp plan. So we want to kind of talk to those issues and maybe look at either incentives or requirements for affordable housing as a percentage of new, um, housing in downtown. Undergrowth and character, I've talked about the first street overlay district, so I'll skip that one, but it is a, a major topic and pressing. Number two is updating industrial zoning. So Wolf Tongue area is the only industrial zone land in town. And so, um, but it's not used necessarily as industrial anymore. And there's housing there. So there's like all of these conflicting, non-conforming uses. And so we're recommending kind of changing that to a flex district and, and updating the allowable uses in there so that you can have more of a flexible use area and, and try to activate that. Encouraging adaptive reuse and activation of vacant buildings and sites and encouraging protection of historic assets. So we looked at a previous historic survey that's been done and for example, Wolf Tongue Mill, um, site and as well as some of the residential properties on, uh, First Street East of Snyder. Were recommended as they're having potential for districts. So we just acknowledge that and keep that, um, front and center. Next slide. Okay. So circulation, gateways and parkway, parking, this is a big one, um, with the most recommendations. Um, and it really outlines, we looked at what, you know, the CIP plans for the town and made some recommendations to update those. For example, um, Jefferson Street and West First connecting the RTD lot to to, uh, First Street and Jefferson Street project should be completed. It's got engineering drawings. We made some recommendations to tweak a little little things, but you know, moving forward with that for sure. Upgrading existing sidewalks to ADA accessible, implementing round, roundabout gateway improvements. That was one of the catalytic projects, um, creating a parking management plan to better manage parking, having signage, better signage to direct people and rules about how long you can stay and just better identification of parking. Redesign Lakeview Drive and Highway 72 intersection. A lot of this, we're also coordinating with the transportation master plan, by the way. So those two plans will also talk to each other. Designing the Snyder Street Bridge and implementing more sidewalks on and on street parking when streets are upgraded. And then under recreation tourism and pla- place making, we've got the signage away finding plan. That's, um, the, the DDA is leading. And so implementing that, creating a downtown maintenance district. This was just an organized, um, management system for trash recycling for downtown businesses. Redesigning First Street as the festival street. That was a catalytic project. And as well as design and implement waterfront park and amphitheater. Adding pedestrian scale lighting to downtown. Uh, it's pretty dark. We definitely want to, uh, respect your love for the, the night sky, um, and Ned, but it's, it's pretty dark there at night. So, uh, implementing some, some lighting would be great. And also creating a series of small plazas and picnic areas throughout the downtown, um, where people can feel comfortable to, uh, stay along the creek, have, you know, lunch, um, or just sit and enjoy the, the beautiful views. Next slide. And then, um, so all of these recommendations are also shown graphically. We did create a 3D model of downtown and, and have an illustrative. These are, again, are not, um, and it's a disclaimer there in yellow, you know, it doesn't represent actual development proposals. These are ideas. But each of the, those areas, um, the character areas are identified and kind of highlighted. And then summarize these recommendations, just so you can see them graphically. So this is the downtown core showing, uh, showing the, the major first street redevelopment, um, potential, kind of breaking up that block into multiple developments, trying to save, um, potentially those existing buildings along First Street. And then just smaller infill in the pink areas. Re, redesigning First Street and, and a concept is shown there, um, using the section that we created with the community, kind of looking at the river, um, or creek walk area along the south. The bridge is there. So this just kind of brings all of the recommendations together. Next slide. And again, so this is showing the north gateway downtown east and waterfront. Um, just, this is really about, you know, building out the sidewalk network to have a walkable downtown, having the amphitheater, um, upgrading the park. Reorganizing parking, the Snyder Street Bridge. Next slide. South gateway is really about activating those vacant buildings, looking at redevelopment potential, um, fixing intersections, adding parking to Lakeview Drive. Next slide. And finally, West Gateway and Wolf Tongue, really looking at, um, uh, RTD parking lot, the, the potential of that area to provide, um, more parking if and when it is needed. Um, again, looking at sidewalks along second, um, creating more of a, a gateway there as you get to the roundabout. Activating, activation of, of Wolf Tongue Mill with, um, active uses and, um, updating, number three, managing the existing shared parking lots that you, shared agreements that you have with the churches, just making sure that that continues. And they could also be paved and, and reorganized to fit in a bit more parking. If desired. And next slide.
I think that's it on, on your content, Chaney.
Okay. Yep. So, um, yeah. Any questions on the downtown sub area plan? I will say I'm, so, um, just real quickly, we're planning to meet with the DDA board on, at their November meeting, which is November 13th. And what we, we really want to try to do is in an implementation chapter, which both the comp plan and downtown sub area plan, will have an implementation chapter, but we're not quite there yet. We want to have those discussions around priorities. So I want to meet with the DDA board to kind of list out these recommendations and say, okay, what does the DDA really want to take on? Because they're a really important entity and, and have the ability to assist with a lot of this. And so, um, trying to understand their priorities and then the town priorities. So that in the implementation chapter, we can be very clear about who's responsible for what.
Thanks, Chaney. Could you please, um, clarify on this slide here, what point number five conceptual redevelopment refers to?
Yeah, that's a property that already has, um, uh, development, well, concept design. I think it was pulled, but that's a Ron Mitchell site. So it's just the, the fact that there is a potential development proposal. So we're just showing it as a future opportunity.
Thank you.
I, I would say that, uh, it would be probably good to show somewhere in there the conceptual redevelopment places where that is privately held property. Somehow, I, I don't know how, you know, but some way of denoting that, that a lot of these areas, you know, are, you know, people that you'd have to get the buy in from the owner on. But, uh, you know, it looks, looks like a great plan. Just the, uh, getting it implemented is the is the crux of the, uh, of the issue there. But any questions from, uh, planning commission members online or in the room that, uh, you have for the SE group? Was that the, uh, the entire presentation? I thought there was a little more.
So the future slides, I can share my screen again. I think I just left those in from last time talking about next steps. But I think based on our previous conversations, some of the timelines of those next steps are probably not relevant anymore. So for this group, we will be working with John to, um, look at some staff review of the actions and objectives here. We also have a survey out based on our draft plan presentation that was done two weeks ago. Um, so we, I think we're going to keep that open until the end of the month. Wrap it up and summarize public comment, uh, before we launch more fully into draft number two. And again, depending on the timeline that we set with PC, BOT and John. So ignore these last three, but what Chaney mentioned about the implementation table um, is absolutely correct. That is not currently drafted and will be something that is drafted and refined before adoption.
Okay. Well, I appreciate this. It's been a, a nice review and, uh, certainly it's the first draft. If any public is, uh, watching this back later on YouTube, uh, there will be changes. And, uh, you still have time to get your feedback in. So send your information to, uh, Town Hall or to the Planning Commission or the BOT. We love feedback.
Can, I do have a question specifically for the planning commission, just to ask, um, ab- about this idea of the first street overlay district. So the CBD district is
I'm sorry, pardon me. Can you, could you identify yourself, please, and tell us where you live?
I'm sorry, this is Chaney again, as, if you guys don't have any questions, I'm going to ask you a question. I just would love to have, uh, planning commission's feedback on the first street overlay district idea. You know, it CBD district, it does encompass most of the CBD. There are the two, uh, triangle properties north of second that are also CBD that wouldn't apply. So I've been talking with Jonathan about, you know, pros and cons, but, um, you, you have the design guidelines, design standards and guidelines from, I think, 2012 that apply to, um, the CBD. And so this is, you know, one way to look at it is we could update those, um, and look at the entire CBD, which is not too much further out of the first street. But we know that the immediate need and, and focus was to kind of you know, make sure that the vision of first street and new development really fits in with that traditional historic character. So, um, any thoughts on, on how the town would implement that? Any, any ideas, concerns? Jim, I think you're muted.
Yeah, Jim, I can't, I don't know if you're talking to us.
John, do you have anything to add on that? I don't really have anything.
No, I think an overlay district is a really great way to look at character areas and like really think about what, what fits and what doesn't. And like making sure that we get some, you know, basic guidelines in place. I don't know if you guys are all familiar with those older set of guidelines Chaney mentioned, but there is some good stuff in there and a good kind of basis with this plan that she's created. I think it could be a good way to really, um, just have that conversation about what downtown looks like.
Okay, perfect. We want to carry forward. I just didn't want anything to backfire.
And to circle it back to the budget, when you don't have a lot of money, land use code implementation is free because it's things you can work through as a planning commission and a board. So you can focus on the action items and goals from the plan that don't cost money. Like land use code changes. So just thought I'd tie the, tie those two things together there as we close out.
It all comes full circle.
Certainly we have opportunity to, to, uh, to make some, some tremendous progress for our town, uh, going forward and looking at things differently. I don't know if everybody who's on here knows that, uh, we were contacted at the last planning commission meeting, uh, we were talk, talking about the industrial zone by the primary owner of that property and saying that they We were talking, talking about the industrial zone, uh, by the primary owner of that property and saying that they would look at possibly, like to see that redevelop into, into some other, uh, more useful property for the town. And so that's something that's on our agenda. In fact, I think it's our next agenda item. And so, you know, it's going to be something that we're addressing, but, uh, this all is, is good information. And I think that the people that fear change, uh, are probably really worried, uh, that we're turning in. I keep hearing, you know, we don't turn our town into brick and wrench. Uh, you know, that's never happened. That's just not going to happen. Uh, you know, we're not, there, there's just not the, the appetite for people to, to build condos. And, and then there's plenty of people that are in the town leadership that don't want to see that either. So we're not going to turn into a, a ski community, but basically we just want to try and, take this information and, you know, develop our town to be a great place to live and work for residents and do more. Do more with what we have, uh, here. You know, that industrial zone is just such a beautiful area over there. That currently there's what four houses, you know, that predated that zoning. Uh, is the only reason there's only how, there's housing there now. Uh, you couldn't build anymore, uh, there currently. So I, I think that there's probably some, some big changes coming for the town, uh, going forward. And this will help us, uh, get to that conversation on what we want to look at. I do want to really kind of mention though, that, uh, I've noticed in this town that there's about, maybe three to five percent of the town that is extremely active and involved in the things that are going on with our town. And then another maybe 50% that when they see changes happening, suddenly they decide that they need to get some input and, and come out and give their two cents on it. So while the information you have is, you know, is good, to just know that that is a small slice of the very active members of our community. And there's a lot of people that, uh, you know, when you start seeing things in the paper and start seeing things, uh, these stories. That's why you start getting these, these letters, uh, to the town and to the boards. So, uh, I, I think we'll be able to educate people as we go and, and we want to continually, wherever possible, put in their info, information that, uh, you know, language that doesn't say this will happen. This is going to happen, you know, these, these are plans, these are recommendations and opportunities, you know, like that zoning map for, for the, uh, overlay for the downtown development authority and the different, uh, possible things for the, for the land use maps. I think that people see that kind of stuff and they get nervous. Uh, and so, you know, wherever possible, at the beginning of these documents, you know, put in their proposed, you know, recommendations, you know, the things that, that let people know that this isn't something that, uh, we're halfway down the road on, you know, they're, they're just plans. Anything else from the Planning Commission? Any, anybody have any other information they want to add? John, you have anything to add?
Just, this is a huge amount of work for all of you. All you guys have already done a lot just reading through this plan. And I just want to thank SE Group and Chaney for all the work you guys do. And I know this is a lot to pull together and to come up with something that's unique and special for every community. That is unique and special is a huge lift. And so we just really appreciate you. And I am excited about this next phase of work because I think it's the funnest part. So we appreciate you guys being flexible to work with us. And I just, um, want to say thank you.
Thank you all for your time.
Okay.
Have a great evening and enjoy the rest of your meeting. Thank you. Bye, everyone.
Thanks very much. So the next item, uh, on the agenda is, uh, 5.2, the industrial zone use group amendment, uh, table as a discussion item. Would you introduce that, please?
Yeah. Alrighty. So this is a modification to the industrial zone and the use group table. At the June 23rd meeting, uh, PC meeting, SE group in town discussed modifications to the industrial zone and the regis, residential use group. Before the meeting, the BA asks, uh, staff to get the PC and SE groups thoughts on mining. And if these should still be allowed in the industrial zone. Commissioner Cornell explained that the previous, uh, PC board was work, when they were working on the land use chapter. When it was redone a while back, had the same question and just chose to keep it as an SRU option because of the historical value. SC group kind of informed the commissioners that many towns are starting to reopen their, um, historical mines as the price of minerals are going up. But their group didn't feel that it made sense for, um, for the, for the town of Nederlin. Overall, the PC felt that they were no longer comfortable, um, really allowing that, or no longer allowing the use of mine. They were comfortable with that idea. It is important to note there are currently no mining operations and in the industrial zone. And therefore it would not affect anyone's current business operations. I posted the table here just so you can see, we would be changing that from R to N. Town staff is recommending working with attorney Madison to draft an ordinance for consideration of amendment to the two highlighted, um, uses above. Staff recognizes the two uses were historical, um, and something that took place in town. However, these are no longer active uses. Um, so town staff really no longer finds that it makes sense for our town. And our question before the board is, um, does the PC want staff to work with attorney Madison to draft this ordinance for consideration of amendment to the two uses highlighted above?
I'm sorry, Tim Duggan here. Uh, I gotta run, but, uh, I will say I echo a lot of the things that the BOT was saying. You know, I don't think we need mining in the middle of town and that will make it more given us 2024. But so, yeah, we're, we're working.
Sorry, who's thinking?
Okay, that was, uh, Commissioner Duggan that the mics aren't working, buddy. So that was just Commissioner Duggan saying that he would support the staff, uh, looking at this and, uh, that he doesn't see the need for, mining in the middle of town.
Oh, thank you.
So.
We need to have public comments on, uh.
Yeah, if there is, it's a discussion item. So if there is any public and they want to make a comment. Uh, unless attorney Madison disagrees, I think that's appropriate.
Probably just better to do that. Okay. So at this time, uh, if there's anybody from the public that has any comments about this, uh, change on the industrial use group table, please add, raise your hand, identify yourself and give me your, uh, name and address and you will have three minutes. Okay. Haven't seen none. I will bring it, close public comment and bring it back to the Planning Commission. So is there any comments by the Planning Commission on this at this time?
I think it's appropriate for, uh, it to be given to attorney Mattson to work on and bring it forward. My mic.
Okay. So, uh, Commissioner Glasser said that she would be in favor of having, uh, attorney Mattson, look at that and draft that and bring that forward. Uh, any, anybody else?
I'm looking to add, uh, support to having attorney Mattson look at it. And echo everything that Linda and TV said.
The only thing I have to add is I pretty much, uh, feel like special review is a great opportunity to catch these things and look at them and, and decide if it's a good fit for our community, the public gets to weigh in. It's a pretty involved process. Um, and I, I wonder, has the staff looked at, would this, i- if we make this change now, would this then cut off possible, you know, mixed use stuff? You know, I, I don't know what kind of mind you might be able to do down there, but let, let's say the environment changes and, and, uh, you'd said that other towns were opening up their minds. Do you feel like this, this talent ties the hands of, of a property owner over there? You know, that, that maybe would want to use, you, you know, try, try and make some money off this, maybe do, if we change this to mixed use?
Um, I would say personally, it doesn't seem like a lot of people are interested in seeing mining come here. That could happen. I would say as an SRU though, if you think it's going to get shut down, that's, and somebody wants to try it. That's a lot of wasted staff time to get them ready for an SRU. Even if we're discouraging them, someone could still continue. You know, I try to set everyone up that I'm bringing to an application like this could, this could be successful, never a guarantee, but that's why we're going to move you forward. So I would just say, I feel like I would be setting someone up for, or, um, failure. Um, and because I think it would get turned down. I don't know that that neighborhood would want to see that. I don't know that that'd be safe for the residential that's there, even though that was that back in the day. I just, I see, don't know that that's the best use. It, yeah, would tie that off, but I don't know if anyone. I haven't heard of anyone having an interest of doing that, creating business over there. Yes, I have heard that interest, but just not mining.
Okay. Thank you for addressing that and, and good, good point there. Uh, not, not, no, we don't want to put somebody down the road of, of, you know, time and effort and staff time. If that is a 98% chance that's going to get denied. Uh, attorney Mattson, you had some to add?
Yes, I did. I, I would echo what Brett said. Um, and in addition, it, having a use categorized as special review use doesn't mean that, um, the Planning Commission and the Board of Trustees can just consider that use and determine whether it's appropriate. The criteria needs to be applied. And if the criteria is met, then essentially the use would need to be approved. Um, so it could create legal liability for the town to keep it in as a special review use. If the intent is actually to deny these types of operations.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, do you have any, any other feedback from the planning commission? Okay. Then I would say, uh, yes, we would like this attorney Mattson and the staff to move forward with drafting, uh, the modification to, an ordinance for the modification to the industrial zone use group table. Uh, and, and bring that back at a date in the future for us to review. But, uh, thank you, uh, for giving me the reasons why we need to do that.
Yeah. Thank you for the nod, everyone. Um, yeah.
And so with that, uh, I think we'll go move on to item 5.3, Natural Medicine Act. And are you going to be presenting that?
So attorney Madison really spent some time drafting this together and I'm not super knowledgeable. So I'm, if that's okay, attorney Madison, I'm just going to throw it over to you because you have knowledge on this.
Sure. Um, and I will, uh, start this off and say that, um, my knowledge is limited as well. And I would say most of the people in the state, their knowledge on this particular issue is, is relatively limited. So the natural medicine, uh, was approved by voters in 2022. The voters passed, um, the Natural Medicine Health Act. And what that does is it decriminalizes and regulates use of certain natural medicines, such as psilocybin, um, for individuals. It legalizes personal use, cultivation and possession of psilocybin and other related natural medicines. In addition, um, that Natural Medicine Act established a regulatory framework for therapeutic, um, use of psilocybin, including healing centers, um, trained facilitators and other such uses, such as cultivation and testing. Related to these, to the regulations, um, there are significant regulations that are in place on the state level. The Department of Regulatory Agencies, DORA, um, and the Department of Regunit, Revenue are responsible for licensing facilitators for the, um, therapeutic use of psilocybin and businesses such as healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturers and testing facilities. Local government's role in this whole process. The state law spells out that local governments cannot prohibit natural medicine services, but can impose reasonable regulations on time, place and manner of operations. So essentially what local governments can do is local governments can dictate where these uses may be placed in zoning districts, um, may put in place, um, regulations related to the manner of operations, um, and prohibit, you know, maybe some spacing distances. There are already spacing distances in state laws from, um, school areas. But this is, this is why we bring this issue to you is that the town is going to need to put in place, um, some zoning regulations for natural medicine. And essentially what those regulations are, is where the use can be operated. I will tell you that, um, the, the state's regulations came out, I believe this summer. So people are kind of scrambling to try to understand what the state regulations are and, and, um, timeframe on all of this. From what I understand, what other local governments are doing is for the healing centers. Um, and this is where a person would go to get psilocybin from a treatment provider, a licensed provider. And they would have, it's been described as a journey. And it would be a therapeutic treatment that somebody would receive. So these other municipalities jurisdictions are allowing that use in an area where other medical office uses are permitted. The other types of uses are cultivation, um, cultivation, testing and product manufacturing. And from what I, I've learned is that other jurisdictions are putting those uses, those are, or maybe more similar to a light industrial type use. And so those uses are being placed in a light industrial zone. Since this aim was in, put in the packet, I have heard more information that the state isn't really ready to roll this out. So I do think we have a little bit more time than what was articulated in this aim. You know, there aren't the, the therapeutic, um, healing centers. They need to get the psilocybin, um, to be able to provide it to the patients that come in. The, the cultivation centers are not, are not yet in use. So it's all going to be a process of the cultivation centers opening up, then the testing, and then maybe some product. And then it will be distributed to the healing centers for providing to patients. Um, so all that said, I think we have a little bit more time than what was spelled out than the December 31st date. A couple of other options would be to put in place a moratorium to allow the town to study this a little bit more. And to consider other options. See what other jurisdictions are doing. We are putting in place a comprehensive plan and the moratorium could be, one of the reasons for a moratorium is that the comprehensive plan is, is being adopted. And so town could wait until that is adopted and then identify, um, locations for these particular uses and update the zoning code based on the adoption of the comprehensive plan. So that was, that was a lot, um, of information. I know it's a lot of information in the packet. I'm happy to answer any questions and, and get your feedback.
This looks as involved as marijuana dispensaries. I mean, this looks like it's going to be that level of, of regulation and, and requirements on, on our part. Is that correct? Am I seeing?
I, I really, I don't think that it is because this, because in order for somebody to operate a use in town, they do also need to be regulated and licensed, um, by the state. And the local government's, um, ability to regulate is, is very limited. Unlike marijuana, local governments had a significant ability to regulate. I mean, you could prohibit marijuana businesses. marijuana businesses. You can't prohibit these um, natural medicine businesses.
What would you say the extended timeline would be that we would have have to be able to get this in place? I mean, I'm sure we can't be the only community that's that's running up against this.
Oh, yeah. No, you're not. Um, I mean, I do think that the, that the fact that the you're going through the process of adopting a comprehensive plan, I mean, I think it would be worth a conversation with a SE group to ask them where they think this, these types of uses would be appropriate in Netherlands. Um, and so having that conversation, finishing out the adoption of the comprehensive plan, and then allowing a little bit of time for town to study these particular uses and identify appropriate locations.
Okay, um, I'll open it up to other people, or is this a? Well, we'll just do it. Let's open it up if uh, there's anybody for for public comment, if there's anybody that would. There's no one here in the room for those of you uh, here. So if there's anybody online that would like to uh, comment, please make yourself known, and you will have three minutes. Okay, I will close the public comment at this time and open it up to the planning commission members for uh, questions or comments.
Uh, this is Commissioner Glasser. I have a question on if it's similar to the marijuana sales. Is there a tax base that goes into town or not?
No, it is, it's not similar to marijuana sales because there are no sales. You cannot sale, sell um, the natural medicine. You have to, in order to um, in order to to get the the psilocybin, you have to go to a a treatment provider, a licensed professional to get the psilocybin, or you have to grow it in your house. But there are no sales.
Okay, thank you.
Following up that you'd mentioned this, so so how would the the centers get the psilocybin in the first place? You'd mentioned cultivation center. Uh, they'd be required presumably to sell it to the
Yeah, they they can sell it, but you can't sell it to individuals.
Ah, okay, that makes sense.
Unless you're going, going through a a treatment provider, yeah.
Right, right. And there's, they're effectively selling the services, not the psilocybin. Is there any reason that we couldn't kind of piggyback the, what we have in place in terms of where medical and recreational marijuana sales are permitted right now? The wellness centers, obviously, they shouldn't be allowed in private residential areas would be allowed anyway. It's a business.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that that's a great point, Commissioner Di, is that um, another recommendation that I would have, and I I haven't talked to to Jonathan or Brett about this, but I do think um, home-based business of a healing facilitator should not be permitted, um, that those should be limited to healing centers. Um, yeah, so, but then the other areas um, or I'm just looking at the the uses, I mean, maybe where marijuana is, I'm trying to see where that is.
And you had also mentioned other where other medical centers were already existing or located, and I didn't know
Yeah.
where where those
I mean, it's Yeah, it is more similar to medical office type um, facilities, at least for the healing centers.
And would it be similar to other medical procedures where if you have like anesthesia or something, you need to have another driver get you home, or are these healing centers just going to send people out onto the road who might be in an altered condition, or maybe I'm just not understanding that therapeutic use, but I'm assuming that that's regulated for safety as well?
Yeah, yeah, no, I I do think that um, the providers will put in place precautions um, for providing this treatment. Um, as I understand, typically, it is a maybe a three a three-session treatment. You go in, you get a consultation. Um, the second session would be getting the psilocybin um, and having that uh, journey is what it has been called. Um, and then the third session is a follow-up um, with the provider to discuss what happened in the journey, and it is really, it's it's therapy-based practice.
There is another
I will say that this is new for, obviously, it's new for Colorado, but it's new for um, many, there are no other places except for Oregon that allow for natural medicine, so the Colorado is really trying to follow what Oregon did, but make it better.
I I know a little bit about this. My wife is a therapist, and she's heard a lot about talk about methamphetamines uh, in the therapy community, and a lot of the motivation behind this is to to make it possible for microdosing to be legal. Where you, uh, Attorney Madison, about uh, the the three visits, there's, you know, introduction, the the journey, and then that's, that's a part of it as well. But the microdosing is, you take such a small amount of psilocybin that you don't even miss it, but it's there are many studies coming out that it has a profound effect on things such as anxiety and the number of things, and this was an attempt to to make it legal to be able to to microdose. Previously, it wasn't under the guide of a therapist. Just a little background that might be useful.
Um, so I'll tell you what it sounds like to me, i- if I was the one making the decision, I would say let's go forward with a moratorium and let some other communities be the first ones to kind of put some things in place, and, you know, we could study how they're doing that. As I'm, as I'm trying to go back and forth and looking at this, you know, it looks like the healing centers would be most likely the type of uh, license that we'd have, but as I I'm looking at this, do we have any actual, I mean, this looks like this is all basically state licenses, so what is our role in this? Would our role be just saying where it would be allowed, because if it could be done in a a private residence, do we want to get down to that level of saying, okay, you can only have it in a private residence in the CBD or or whatever it is, uh, as opposed to, go ahead, I I I'm ignorant on this. Go ahead, John.
I have a question related, Jim, and I just wanted to, I'm not sure, but some of these experiences are longer periods of time, similar to what you might do at a short-term rental or a bed and breakfast. Is that, I don't know if anybody knows the answer to that question, but I I know that there's different kinds of experiences that might be covered by that, and I'm wondering if the the impacts of those on residential areas might be the similar to what we see for like a short-term rental or a bed and breakfast?
Um, well, I would say I would say that, go ahead.
Like, it's almost like a stay-away journey, kind of like what you're talking about, like a short-term journey?
Well, I know some of the journeys do last, are longer periods of time, and I I guess I just don't understand fully like what is anticipated, like on that use, and like that use would impact residential areas the same if you did have, you know, several guests at a home for a weekend or something like that, or even if, you know, if that's really the impact more than what the the business use case is, and I know we've got certain restrictions on businesses and residential anyway, so I was just wondering if that's a a consideration.
Hey, this is Commissioner, this is Commissioner Duggan, real quick. Yeah, I kind of echo that, like, what are the anticipated impacts from having a cultivation facility or a product manufacturer, testing facility, or heating, healing center um, in any given location, and that will kind of govern, you know, what we want to do about it, or how we want to limit it, if at all?
Yeah, I I think that the answers are um, a little bit unknown, again, because this is a a new area. Um, but remember that um, that to get a um, the psilocybin, somebody has to go to see a licensed provider to get that treatment. So um, that would either need to be, that would need to be at a healing center, a place that is licensed to operate as a healing center. You could have a healing center maybe as a secondary use in another medical office, or maybe chiropractic office, or something like that. Um, and, you know, maybe you could have um, the state licensing a healing center as a residential location. Netherlands could decide that residential um, structures, residential locations are not appropriate for a healing center.
Right, that that makes sense, but I I I think it's pretty clear that for any of those four items that, you know, you're not going to have like crazy people running around tripping in the streets, you know? Um, so I I think it would probably be pretty limited regulation, if anything. And back to Mike's point, if we could piggyback that in some other use category that it would go along with, that might be the easiest.
Attorney Mattson, do you know of other other communities that are that are getting ready to roll out uh, you know, something that we could look at as an example? Because it sounds like the main thing we're going to have to decide on is is the time and place that, you know, that that the state would be the ones that are going to handle all the licensing and all the requirements, but the the thing that falls to us as I'm reading it is basically saying where we would allow uh, any of these four uh, type of of uses for the psilocybin uh, to to be implemented.
Yeah, um, I I can work on getting um, some examples of what other jurisdictions are doing. I know that Boulder, the city of Boulder has looked at it. I don't know that they put in anything in place. Um, but, you know, maybe I I'm getting the sense that the direction is to go ahead and put in place a moratorium to evaluate um, and study the best locations for these particular uses. And maybe with the moratorium, also put in place a um, prohibition of a natural or a healing center as a home-based business, or any, any of these uses as a home-based business.
Uh, that sounds good to me. I would, I would definitely, this is like a pretty, pretty new uh, world here, and I would definitely like to see some examples. If that is something with that that we have the ability to do, and the BOT agrees with that, uh, I I don't know if people are beating down the door at Town Hall to open up healing centers right now, uh, but yes, would six months be uh, uh, enough of a time, or would you recommend longer or less time? What would you say?
I would say nine, nine months. I mean, I don't, I don't think the state is going to be issuing licenses again, so for people to be opening up these type of businesses, they need to get a license, and from what I've heard, the state is not going to be ready like they had hoped um, to issue these licenses, and so I I think we have more time to get everything in place, and so I would suggest at least nine months.
Okay, any feedback from uh, our BOT liaison on this?
That sounds perfectly fine. We've got a lot to tackle in the next nine months, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Anything else from other commissioners?
I was just thinking before we place a moratorium on something, you should reach out to community members that are actually interested in it, um, therapists. That's not something my wife, by the way, deals with, but I know that there are other therapists that are very interested in that. I'd be happy to contact them if they would like to have some input.
Well, I guess, just to, just to clarify, Attorney Madison, because even before it gets to the therapist's doorstep, so to speak, before they even have it, so that they can provide therapy, there is several months of where these production sites have to spin up, they have to be regulatory, that they have to go through regulatory compliance and everything like that, so I, I mean, and so Commissioner Di, I'm also curious, like, knowing that all that infrastructure and all that, those things have to happen, would we be impinging upon any therapist's ability to deliver these services?
Oh, probably not, because I doubt they, it doesn't like they can get a license and won't be able to for anyway. So I got, I I was just saying that it might be great to the the input from those community members that are more knowledgeable about it and could help us towards a sensible sensible policy, sensible code.
Well, can, is it possible to put the moratorium in place just because I think there's a more critical piece here in that we have the comprehensive plan that also could potentially help inform this, but then also in the interim be getting the feedback from folks who might be interested, like, hopefully, your wife would be available.
Subject matter expert.
Yeah, exactly. I just, I I just wonder if, like, if we can still accomplish actually both goals happening in parallel.
Right, right. I don't see why not, yeah.
Okay.
So is there, my my recommendation would be to extend that to a year, just to give us uh, the calendar year, it's pretty clean, that becomes then twenty twenty-five, that is the year of moratorium. Uh, you know, of course, the BOT will have to be the final decision on that. Is there anybody uh, on this meeting that has any heartburn with recommending a year-long moratorium to allow other communities to uh, kind of put things in place here? While, of course, we're working on our comprehensive plan and all the other things that we have to study. Is there anybody that feels like a year would be, would be too long?
No, I think it would be appropriate.
Okay, Glaser said that that would be appropriate, and uh, so I, that would be my recommendation then. Do, do, what kind of action do we have to take here, Brett? Do we just, is this not a four, or how's this work on this?
That's a great question. Um, we just listed this as a discussion item, so let me see.
Well, while she's looking that up, I believe we're in agreement to recommend to the BOT a year of moratorium to allow this to be studied further and to allow the state to kind of put systems in place uh, and and the other communities, you know, it would be great to let somebody like Boulder, who has a lot more resources, uh, figure out how they're going to tackle this, and then, or even some other communities that are closer to our size, and and then see how we want to implement it, because honestly, it could become something to where we find out there's not a lot of harm. It's very highly regulated and and overseen, you know, there's therapists that have licensure uh, things and that are going to be overseen by the state, and that we may decide, well, you know, this is appropriate for a home-based business, uh, you know, for somebody to use, you know, out of their residence, you know, but I I think we need the time to kind of let this unfold and see uh, you know, what the impacts are going to be, and you know, if if it turns out that there's Airbnb mushroom weekend parties, uh, you know, then I'm sure that we'll, we'll need to take appropriate action to to make sure we don't have people running around on mushroom trips through our community.
Yeah, I mean, I even look at it as, could it be in an industrial zone? Could we have one of the production plants that are meaningful and create jobs in our community, and that has a kind of a therapeutic aspect to it? Absolutely. I mean, that's, that wouldn't be, you know, really that outside of Ned- Netherlands sort of, you know, spirit. Um, so I think too, like, if we could also make sure that in this interim, we are having some sort of, you know, John, I would recommend that if we could have some sort of outreach and just like post it as a part of getting feedback, um, like Mike, like Commissioner Dietz said, you know, those who would have a voice or have something to say about it, I think that would be really helpful.
Okay.
So can we just say that we recommend uh, So can we just say that we recommend this and, and we have?
Question about, sorry to interrupt, the question about moratoriums in general. I seem to recall from the moratorium on, it was parking from sold for several months ago. I thought the, and maybe it was just that specific case, but the moratoriums were only supposed to be put in place as kind of an emergency measure. I, I may not remember this correctly.
Well, typically moratoriums are adopted as, as emergency ordinances. And I don't know, depending on the BOT schedule, it might be an emergency ordinance, because I would recommend that it's effective either December 31st or January 1. But yes, typically they are put in place as an emergency.
Okay. Imagine there may be some kickback of calling this an emergency, doesn't particularly feel but I know there are legal ramifications that have an urgency about it. That's all I know.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Yeah, I think that's a, this is appropriate recommendation. Unless Attorney Madison sees something different than I do. I, we really just had this as a discussion item and questions were kind of like, do you have questions? Any amendments you're thinking of? And it sounds like we're not ready. We're ready to see what's going to go on kind of around us.
Yep. So I think a nod at four with, with direction is, is appropriate.
I'm seeing nods here in the room.
I think it's appropriate if the state, this is a Commissioner Glasser, if the state hasn't set their regulations for what the towns are going to do, we're kind of have our hands tied on how to move forward. So I don't think a moratorium would be inappropriate in that regard until we know the direction the state is going.
Okay. Anything else we need to do to, for, on, on this issue, Attorney Mattson?
No, no, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay, there certainly, I, I, I looked through that information. I can tell you I didn't absorb all of it, because there was a lot in the packet and it looks very complicated. And so, you know, wherever possible, I'd like to let somebody else who has a lot more resources and staff go to work on that and then we can steal their ideas. So with that, we'll move on to action item 6.1, the November PC meeting date amendments. And the reason currently the November meeting falls the day before Thanksgiving, which is not good timing for family members. And so I believe, go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's okay. He's presenting it for me. I love it. Um, yeah, so the, it falls the day before. We, you know, make an assumption that you guys are probably getting ready, heading out. So if approved, the new meeting date would be Wednesday, November 20th. Vice Chair Reese also brought up that him and Chair Williams were talking about our December meeting falls on the 25th. So although I didn't address it in the same, I think it'd be appropriate to add that. You know, to recommend also moving that date up as well. So we're just looking for recommendations to move those two meetings. I'm sorry, I did not put little statements in here for that, kind of quick and dirty, but yeah, just looking to get those dates moved up.
Okay, at, at this time, is there any members of the public that would like to speak about us changing the November and December planning commission, scheduled planning commission dates? You will have three minutes to identify yourself now. Okay, having heard none, we'll close the public comment and bring this back to the planning commission. I will just tell you that we looked ahead and, and December 18th was another possibility for December and, and Steve had said, Commissioner Williams had said, Chairman Williams had said that he felt like people would probably already be getting busy with their, their holiday plans at that time. And I agreed. So we were looking at changing the dates to November 20th and December 11th. There is a possibility that the December 11th meeting could end up being canceled, but we didn't want to decide that now, even with all the comprehensive plan stuff. And the members that aren't here tonight that definitely want to have input. So is there anybody on the planning commission or in here that has any comments or concerns about changing the dates for November to November 20th and December to December 11th?
This worked for me as would December 18th.
Okay, then if that's the case, I would, can, can I make a motion or is that not something that the chairman?
Yeah, Attorney Madison, I messed up and didn't give them any proposed motions. So yes, is he allowed to kind of?
Yes, yes, you can make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we change the November and December planning commission meeting dates to November 20th and December 11th. 2024. Seconded by Commissioner Glasser.
Put your shirt on.
Alrighty, Commissioner Di? Commissioner Duggan?
Yep, approved.
Uh, Vice Chair Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinzener?
Yes.
Commissioner Glasser?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Sterling?
Yes, but I don't think I actually vote.
I'll just ask you anyways.
I appreciate the move of inclusivity. Thank you.
Okay, motion passes. Those will be the new dates. That ends our items, our action and discussion items. At this time, we will have informational items. So I will leave it to Britt for you to give us whatever highlights or whatever you want from the staff reports.
Okay, um, I'll start with mine. I didn't really look it over. So if you guys did and you have questions, feel free to ask me. I can do it on the fly, but I did want to let you guys know our sustainability coordinator started. Her name is Cass Grady. She will be attending the next meeting. There was going to be a lot of feedback going on. She did a lot today, so I just told her, let's, let's hop on the next one. So she'll introduce herself. She's hopping right in on it, has a lot of her experience from Grand Junction. And she'll be working under me and Nikki. So she's been great addition to the team. Other than that, I mean, we're, we're busy. We're in budget season. So John and Rita are really busy with that. The rest of us are kind of just like cranking out on these grants. I'm doing my grant report right now. So I don't know, John, is there any major things you want to hit?
You really have been busy. We've gotten a lot of projects done this since I've been here. One notable one is we were able to find some money to pay West Spring. Which was really good. There's a really bad drainage problem over there and some of the dirt washing into the culverts is causing big time problems for Old Town. So that was a really cool project that just got finished. We're kind of transitioning right now from working on culverts and, and ditches towards getting all our stuff ready for snow. So you'll probably see our trucks start to have plows on them more. As Britt said, we are working on the budget. We are probably going to have a draft of it finished tomorrow, the first draft. It'll go to a work session on the 29th with the BOT and then we will bring it back on the 12th for a kind of a final draft review. And then at the end of the month on the night, I think the meeting is on the 19th. That's when we'll have our budget hearing and it'll be adopted at the first meeting in December, hopefully, as long as we don't run into any huge problems. We kind of talked about this a little bit. The financial situation of the town is something that we need to be thinking about. And I think there's some implications for planning commission and some of those conversations, but that's a next year conversation. We're really trying to just make sure we're responsible with our revenues. We're really, our staff is in a good job this year keeping expenditures down significantly. Revenues are, are coming in stable, but they're not, you know, we need to be thinking about the resiliency of those kind of revenue sources in the future. So that'll be something, once the comprehensive plan is done, the BOT will be doing a strategic plan. So we can start working on the next two years of work for us, which I'm excited about, because we've got a lot of things that are going to be fun to work on. But that's kind of like a very high overview. If you guys have any questions about departments or operations or any of that kind of stuff, I'm happy to answer.
I was gonna add one more update. Utilities has repaired four hydrants in the past month, which is like huge around here. We do have some that are in pretty rough shape and inoperable. So that's a, and we're repairing them ourselves now, so just something to highlight. I'm sure you might have heard it from your neighbors if you get some brown or orange water, but they're moving, they're moving pretty quickly on this.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Yeah, I, I had one question. I, I was just kind of looking through there and I saw that it said on the short-term rental licenses that we had 20 new and renewed licenses issued. I was curious if you happen to know, and if you don't, that's not a problem. Are we now at our capacity? Have we hit our 72 license limit?
Don't know the specific number, but I'm more than happy to share that with the planning commission via email or at next meeting.
Okay, I, I just, that was just from my info. I was just curious, you know, 20 sounded like a lot, but I guess a lot of those are.
A lot of them are renewals, yeah. We're still not seeing this like big drive for new short-term rentals.
We have increased our, like, our violation processing, I guess, for illegal short-term rentals. And there has been some significant action in that space too. So that is another piece of this work that's happening right now.
Yep, rules don't matter if there's no accountability, no unfortunate. So, okay, that sounds good. Any questions from planning commission members for the staff?
I have a question. This is Commissioner Glasser. The fence at the cemetery is ready to fall over and it may go towards the road. And also there's a huge dead tree that looks like it may hit some of the headstones. I don't know if any attempt has been made to look into this or sort of resolve this, because it could do damage if it does hit some of the headstones.
I'll talk to Nikki about that. I'm sure she knows about it, but I don't know what the plan is, so I can, I can find out and we'll follow up.
Okay, thank you.
Unfortunately, since our church kind of heads up the maintenance and mowing of the, and weed eating of the cemetery, I know there's no budget for them. So that'll be interesting. If it turns out that you need some extra manpower to help with that, please let me know.
We could go get a coke, Jim, and we'd just take care of it.
There you go, there's a plan. Okay, the, um, if that's the case, then we'll close the informational item 7.1 under other business. I have one issue and it was referenced in the letter from Commissioner Cornell, that he feels like he, that the planning commission is not getting notified very well for the meetings, these, these, that, that we're having for the comprehensive plan. And, you know, I've already talked with John about this and, and they're putting some things in process, but I just wanted to make sure on the record that this had been said by a couple of members that, hey, we'd like to get a, a better streamlined process for the boards to be notified for, and, and I would say pretty much any of the meetings, you know, sustainability, all, all those meetings that are going on. You know, it wasn't hurt to, to get an email out, because, you know, I happen to be on Facebook, so I saw the public and the notification for the public meeting for the comp plan presentation was able to come. But I, I think that that would be something that would be great if we could just get email notification out to the boards when there's going to have these kind of meetings that for community, community-type projects and things are happening.
Like maybe a weekly digest of everything.
Nope, I'm not trying to make it hard.
Yeah, I think between Peter and I, we can get those emails going again. I think I put a lot on my plate and that one was missed, but we can definitely start getting those back out to all the boards.
That, that, I know we've got those group, those group planning commission emails and BOT me emails and all, you know, so yes, let's, let's make use of that. Any other business that anybody else online or in the room has?
Not so much business, but just, I don't know if it was me and I just heard multiple people mispronounce Jennifer Madsen's last name, but it is Attorney Madsen, not Madison. And names are super important to me, so I just want to make sure that we say her name correctly. So that's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you.
And I don't need to bring up again, but the, I'm just curious if the Gillespie House report ever did get passed on to the BOT or if there was any distribution or discussion about that.
To the planning commission, because everyone asked. I think there's some work that we're gonna like chat with Boulder and there's a couple more things we want to do before we probably get that over to the board of trustees. Just more research on, between Nikki, myself, John, and also maybe getting some like really hard numbers for them. That was something requested by Mayor Potom Sterling as well. And so that is still on my radar. I just got to do some more digging on my end, but I did get it out at least to the planning commission and it is being worked on. You're not forgotten. We appreciate you bringing it up.
Keep me posted if I can help with anything.
Awesome. Yeah, I'd love, I would love that. I will keep you in the loop.
And I'll just say that she knows us well, because the first thing we'll push back on is if there's no hard numbers. And so she knows, she knows what she's doing here.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Okay. Motion to adjourn and seconded.
All in favor?
Approved.
This meeting has ended at 9:21. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, y'all.
Much for your patience. Old bugs worked out by next time.
Yeah, you know, you already know me. All right, see you guys.
Bye.